Now in session, the opening week prayer will be given by the Honorable Paul R. Riddick, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Riddick.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, asking you to continue to bless our citizens and our residents. We also ask, Lord, that you go to places in our country and that have challenges as far as natural catastrophes are concerned, wildfires, floods, hurricanes, people in Puerto Rico, the people in Australia. We ask that you give us the ability to do this job in a fair and just manner. We thank all the households who are represented here tonight. We hope we can disagree without being disagreeable. We ask that you give every person here traveling mercy if they can get back to their homes safely. These are all the blessings in asking our name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Doyle?
Here.
Mrs. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Alexander?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting.
For resolution certifying a closed meeting of the Council of the City in Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution, Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Good evening. For the benefit of those who do not regularly attend our council meetings, our procedure is to take up ceremonial items first. Next, we take up public hearings, then the consent agenda, which will be voted on in a block. If any member of the council or the public wishes to discuss an item, it will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Following the consent agenda, we will take up regular agenda items in order as they appear on the docket. Upon the completion of the agenda, we then take up any new business that comes before the council. To address the council, you should have registered to speak in the lobby of the council chamber before 7:00 PM. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Clerk, IB1.
IB1 is the next on the receipt of bids pursuant to imitation bids and notice of public hearing scheduled this day pursuant to state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to accept bids for a long-term wireless facilities franchise agreement with a term of 10 years, with up to three renewal terms of five years each in the city's rights of way, subject to certain terms and conditions.
Mr. Clerk, how many bids have been received?
Received one bid, sir.
Please read the bid and mark it for identification.
Mobile Light LLC has submitted the following bid. Please consider this correspondence a formal response to the City of Norfolk's request for bids for a franchise for the use of city rights of way. In close here review and reference, you will find the non-exclusive wireless facilities franchise agreement as finalized between Mobile Light LLC and the city. Pursuant to discussions with the city staff, Mobile Light LLC seeks access to rights of way to install, maintain, and operate wireless facilities in the city.
Are there any additional bids offered? If there are no additional bids offered, I declare the bidding closed. Is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? If there's no member of the public who wishes to be heard, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a recommendation from the city staff regarding a bid received from Mobile Light LLC?
Mayor, the city staff recommends that the bid by Mobile Light LLC be reviewed by city staff and a recommendation be made to the council at the January 28, 2020 meeting.
Is there a motion to continue this matter until January 28, 2020, meeting of the city council to receive the recommendation of city staff and to consider the bid from Mobile Light LLC?
Mr. Mayor, I so move.
I second the motion.
Is there any further discussion? If not, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly. The motion is to continue till January 28. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, motion to continue PH1 until January 28.
Motion to continue PH1 until January 28. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, PH2?
Public hearing two scheduled this day under the state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk on the application of the City Planning Commission for a text amendment to the Norfolk zoning ordinance to revise and remove inconsistent definitions and fix clerical areas in section 3.9.6. B, definitions, section 3.9.7.G, definitions, section 5.7.3, definition of terms, and section 8.3.2, terms defined.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
I have an ordinance to amend sections 3.9, 5.7, and 8.3 of the Norfolk zoning ordinance so as to review and remove inconsistent definitions and fix clerical errors. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. PH3?
Public hearing three scheduled this day under the state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments approving a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise agreement with Peg Bandwidth Virginia LLC.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
I have an ordinance approving a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise agreement with Peg Bandwidth Virginia LLC. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. PH4?
Public hearing four scheduled this day under the state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments authorizing the vacation of two utility easements in the closed portion of Woodus Avenue. I have an ordinance authorizing the vacation of two utility easements in the closed portion of Woodus Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. PH5?
Public hearing five scheduled this day under the state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments approving a lease agreement with SBA 2012 TC Assets LLC for a parcel of land at 1311 Bayville Street. I have an ordinance approving a lease agreement with SBA 2012 TC Assets LLC for a parcel of land at 1311 Bayville Street. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. PH6?
Public hearing six scheduled this day under the state law. Public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments approving a lease agreement with Verizon Virginia LLC for a parcel of land at Fairlawn Elementary School Recreation Center.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
I have an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Verizon Virginia LLC for a parcel of land at Fairlawn Elementary School Recreation Center in the city of Norfolk. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, motion is to continue C1 to February 25?
Motion to continue C1 until February 25. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, the motion is to include C2, C3, C4, C5, C7, C8, C9, C10, and C11 in the block, all except C6.
Approve those items with the consent agenda. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective dates except C6. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, C6?
C6 is an ordinance amending the FY 2020 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 47636 so as to accept, appropriate, and authorize the expenditure of grant funds up to the sum of $77,467 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for the Camp Hope Youth Engagement Program for Victims of Domestic Violence for the Norfolk Sheriff's Office.
LSW James.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name is LSW James. I reside at 2021 Kenlake Place in the city of Norfolk. I wanted to call attention to this C6 item and put an exclamation mark beside it. This is a very important area, and I'm delighted to see that the sheriff's office is handling the program. They have an excellent record in this city of doing the kind of work that this item, C6, represents. The Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for Camp Hope Youth Engagement Program for Victims of Domestic Violence, and it's being handled, of course, by the Norfolk Sheriff's Office. This is an extremely important area, in my opinion, and I would hope that the council will vote solidly and unanimously in favor of authorizing the expenditure of the funds that are involved here. This is a big-ticket item, Mr. City Manager, in so many ways, and I appreciate your patience. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, R1?
R1 is an ordinance approving a lease of certain property owned by the City of Norfolk located at 204 East Main Street to Philly D, Inc., for a period of up to five years upon certain conditions and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the lease agreement on behalf of the city.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Abstain.
Thank you. Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, R2?
R2 is an ordinance to amend and reordain the city's operating budget for fiscal year 2020 to add $358,184 to the budget and to amend and reordain section 1 of ordinance number 47636 and section 1 of ordinance number 47742 so as to appropriate and authorize the expenditure of St. Paul's Area Transformation designated funds from the general fund balance for administration of St. Paul's Area Transformation.
LSW James.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is LSW James. I know you don't hear from me very often, but I'm here to whisper sweet nothings in your ears. This, the reason I'm concerned about R2 is it involves something that the residents of the area that's going to be impacted have legitimate concerns about. Now, I am not a big fan of HUD, and I wanted to say that to you upfront. The problem is that the man who now runs HUD for the current administration is no friend of those of us who have fought for years to eliminate discrimination in housing, especially where HUD is involved. The issue itself is extremely important, and I hope that you will not be swayed by my concerns, but if there are residents who come forward to speak on this issue or express their concerns during the public hearing session afterwards, after the regular agenda, that you will pay close attention to what their concerns are. I know that some of you good people on council have had concerns and have expressed in the informal session your reservations, and you put forward your questions. St. Paul's represents an area that is about to be subjected to some rough and tumble when it comes to the issue of housing legitimately, the residents who are going to be displaced and impacted. I know that is, may sound strange to you, but it is said to you from a person who happens to be the head of Tydeward Affair Housing. I know a little bit about this battle and how long it's been going on, and I do know what some of the pitfalls are. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
I would just like to say, I want to take the opportunity to thank Susan and her staff for all their hard work. Instead of allowing this money to go by the wayside as unused, is it on? Yeah, okay. Instead of allowing this money to go by the wayside as unused funds, they are diligent in making sure that every nickel, penny, and dime that is allotted for St. Paul's is used responsibly and is used ethically, and therefore the request for the rollover of funds. So this is operating budget money, and we want to make, we want to make sure we don't fall to the old adage of use it unnecessarily or lose it, that we roll it over and that we use it and use it wisely. So thanks to the staff, but not for someone who looks at this, eats, drinks, and sleeps this every day like Susan and her staff do. We may have very well overlooked this, this pot of money. So thank you, and I vote aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R3?
R3 is an ordinance accepting the bid by McKinnon Tower LLC for a long-term garage parking agreement with a term of 20 years for the lease of 81 parking spaces in Commercial Place Garage located at 520 East Main Street, 118 parking spaces, and the Fountain Park Garage located at 130 Bank Street, 91 spaces, and the Waterside Garage located at 50 Martins Lane, and 89 spaces, and the Bank Street Garage located at 441 Street in the city of Norfolk. And this item was passed by December 10, and I need a recommendation from the city manager in order to move forward.
Mr. Manager?
Sir, city staff has examined the fiscal impact of this bid, and we're recommending the council reject this bid.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pischko?
There's been a little bit of confusion that we had two drafts of this ordinance. One was in the affirmative to vote yes to accept the manager's recommendation. The draft that you have before you tonight is in the negative, and so to accept the manager's recommendation, the vote would be no, that we're not accepting the bid. And so that if you agree with the manager, your vote would be no tonight on this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Pischko. Thank you, Mr. Dr. Firelight. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
The motion is to reject the bid. Mrs. Doyle?
No.
Mrs. Graves?
A no vote is a yes vote to support the manager, or a yes vote is a no vote to support the manager.
I'm sorry.
Clerk read it in the affirmative.
The clerk read it in the affirmative, and the ordinance that I have is in the negative. So...
So if I vote yes, is that no, or if I vote no, is that yes?
So, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, strike, strike, strike the, 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 the previous vote by Mrs. Doyle. Let's start again.
The, 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 the motion is written in the affirmative, but the ordinance is written in the negative. So what you'll be voting on is the ordinance accepting the bid. So the manager's recommendation is in the negative.
Right.
So to go with the manager's recommendation?
We vote no.
It would be a no.
All right.
I'm sorry about the confusion.
Thank you. So I reaffirm my no vote.
Thank you.
All right.
Mrs. Graves?
No.
Mrs. Johnson?
No.
Mrs. McClellan?
Abstain.
Mr. Riddick?
No.
Mr. Smigel?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Dr. Alexander?
No. Mr. Clerk, have additional?
That's all I'll answer.
So we, we're about to start our new business. When your, when your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and your address. Please limit your comments to, to three minutes. Danny Lee Ginn.
My name is Danny Lee Ginn. I reside at 3844 Dare Circle. I know many of you have gathered in this chamber tonight because you're concerned about your constitutional rights, and you should be, and you should stand up for them. But I think you need to change your priorities somewhat, because I think you're probably ill-informed that in this very city, in the city of Norfolk, there is a written ordinance that gives the mayor of this city the right to strip you of your First Amendment rights, your freedom of speech. It enables him the power that if he decides not to hear what you want to say, or he feels that it's cumulative in presentation, it's repetitive, it has been adequately discussed, he has the power by the city council to stop this presentation and discussion if he so desires. So I think that you should be aware that not only your Second Amendment rights may be challenged, but in this very city, your freedom of speech and your First Amendment rights have already been denied if the mayor of the city so desires to exercise it, and it is in writing. So you, you may want to take a, a very good look at having this portion of the statement removed, as I have tried to do for years, in order to ensure that you will have your First Amendment rights guaranteed in this city.
Thank you, Mr. Ginn. Carl, Carl Poole, Carl Poole the second, the third, Carl Poole. He'll be downstairs. Okay. Yes, sir. Come right forward.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, city council, good evening.
Good evening.
First thing, I'm not going to talk about guns. Just so, you know, so you know you say.
Mr. Poole, can you state your, state your name and your address?
Well, I'm just going to get that out.
Okay.
My address is 234 West 33rd Street, Norfolk, Virginia, Park Place.
Thank you.
Although this is new business, what I am going to talk about is something that should be older business to you. In August of 2017, you passed unanimously a resolution expressing the desire to relocate the Main Street statue honoring Confederate soldiers and requesting that the Attorney General to expedite providing an opinion regarding the legality of relocation. Mr. Mayor, you said that night that it was the council's consensus that the time had now come to move the monument. Councilwoman Graves, you further asked to clarify about that, ask of the Attorney General that if it was to see if it was illegal for the city council to ask to move the monument. And you also stated that it would help to begin to heal this, our city and continue conversations about our past, because we cannot forget about our past. However, in the last few months, I've been wondering whether or not you guys have forgotten your real recent past. End of October last year, I believe the Attorney General, after some legal suits had been filed, had finally given an opinion on the matter. And although I'm not a lawyer, I, men may to understand that he said you could move the monument, that he wasn't going to do anything, that his office wasn't going to do anything, and that the law that you were concerned with didn't apply to the monument downtown. That was October. November, what did you do? I don't know. December, what did you do? I don't know. So January, I'm here to ask just one question, and you don't have to answer me verbally, because I was raised by, with the mantra of, my words don't mean anything to reflect my intentions more than my actions do. So my question is simple. What are you all going to do? The Attorney General said he's going to do nothing, because it's legal for you to move that monument. And in that resolution, you did state that you expressed your desire to relocate the monument. So what are you going to do? You don't have to answer that question here. Like everyone in Norfolk, I'll be watching your actions, and your actions will tell me what your intentions are. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Robert Brown?
You there? Council, we off the agenda already? Thank you. I'm Robert Brown. I'm at 8507 Troy Street, and I'm chairman of the Norfolk Republican Party. I'm here in support of the Second Amendment. You've been reached out to by a number of citizens in Norfolk, asking you to put a Second Amendment resolution on the agenda. We've heard very little from you. So I'm here to ask you to your face, and once you put a Second Amendment, constitutional amendment on the agenda. Our founding fathers believed that the right to keep and bear arms was fundamental to our very freedom as a people. And Virginia is the birthplace of freedom in our country, and I will not sit idly by and watch those freedoms be diminished. The Second Amendment is not about honey. It's not about target practice. It is a political right. History makes it clear it was necessary, necessary to write it into our Constitution. They wanted protection for a good reason. When the British made their first attempt to squash liberty and failed, it was because the colonists were armed. Because our founding farmers were armed, we gained independence. That's why the Second Amendment was added to our Constitution so that we remain free. We, the people, believe our rights come from our Creator. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that we are all created equal, and we are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. This is what American exceptionalism is all about. That's why the Constitution begins with "we, the people." Not "we, the elected," not "we, the elite," but "we, the people." Our rights come from Creator and not from government. The Constitution said that our rights are unalienable. The Bill of Rights does not say the Constitution gives you the right to bear arms. It says the right to bear arms shall not be infringed. The founding fathers believed that the right to bear arms comes from our Creator and not our government. Our founding fathers knew that if they didn't have the right to bear arms, they would have been crushed. The right to bear arms is a political right designed to safeguard freedom so that no government can take away these rights, that God is willing to give you those written by the people who spent their lives fighting the greatest power in the world at the time, British Empire. They gave their fortunes, their sacred honor, and their lives to found this country and preserve that freedom. They knew if they didn't have the right to bear arms... They knew if they didn't have the right to bear arms, they would have been enslaved. They didn't want us to be enslaved either and that's why they guarantee us the right to protect ourselves. The Second Amendment is a political right of the deepest importance of the survival of the freedom in America. Control of our legislature was bought by outside entities with millions of dollars to buy control of the Commonwealth. We dissolved most expensive statewide races in Virginia history. Mayor Bloomberg spent over two and a half billion. Columbus George Soros spent millions. We want Virginians deciding our political future, not outsiders.
Thank you, Mr.
What we are seeing in Virginia is a phenomenal grassroots effort to hold a line on the Second Amendment.
Mr. Brown, thank you so much for coming.
Not the cash routes that brought control, but a real organic grassroots like Duffing's Everything. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Victoria Hayne Line? Victoria? Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Victoria Hayne Line and my address is 323 West 34th Street in Norfolk. According to the annual crime data, the crime rate in Norfolk is 111% higher than the average of the whole state of Virginia. And when compared with the national average, it's 52% higher. When looking at violent crimes, Norfolk has 132% higher violent crime rate than the Virginia average while remaining 22% higher than the national average. In property crime, Norfolk, Virginia is 108% higher than the average of Virginia and is 57% higher than the national average. For every 100,000 people, there are 10.76 daily crimes that occur in Norfolk. Norfolk is only safer than 13% of the cities in the United States. That means that 87% of the cities in the United States are safer than the city of Norfolk. In Norfolk, you have a 1 in 26 chance of becoming a victim of any crime. In Norfolk, Virginia, you have a 1 in 216 chance of falling victim to a violent crime such as rape, robbery, assault, or even murder. In terms of property crime, your chances of being a victim are 1 in 29. These crimes include theft, vehicle theft, and burglary. Your overall chance of being a victim of crime in Norfolk is 1 in 26, as I stated a minute ago. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm not saying that to you to disparage the city of Norfolk, to disrespect the city of Norfolk. I have lived in Norfolk for 24 years. I could have moved out of the city of Norfolk at any time. I have moved once within the city of Norfolk. I actually moved from Granby Street, 6700 block of Granby Street, 15 years ago to Park Place. And I know all of you know about Park Place. When I moved into Park Place, I heard gunfire in my neighborhood in what sounded very close, although it's difficult to range, to think about how far away gunfire is. But I heard gunfire, I would say probably on a weekly basis, that was back in 2004. We actually had two cars drive the wrong direction down 34th Street, the second car shooting out of the window with a sawed-off shotgun and the police were out in front of my house the next day picking up casings off the street. There are people who would think that that should make me very strongly against guns, against so-called assault weapons. But I am a patriot first, an American citizen first before a Norfolk citizen. But I do love my city. But I'm concerned about the crime rate in Norfolk. I recently put the Neighbors app on my phone and you get notifications. So I just wanted to say that we have the right to protect ourselves.
Thank you so much.
And I ask you to support a Second Amendment resolution and a hearing so that we can come back and speak and vote on that.
Thank you so much. James Leturno?
My name is Jim Leturno. I live at 137 West Ocean Avenue in Norfolk. Distinguished counsel, thank you for taking our time to listen to our voices. I had a speech lined up. You know, I was going to quote some Constitution at you guys. You already know it. I'm sure every one of you have read the Constitution and understand how it works. I was going to make some quotes on some famous historical people, but I don't think I need to do that. This lady just presented exactly one of our main immediate reasons why we need to be armed, especially in this area. I didn't own guns, I didn't own handguns for many, many, many years. I stopped using a gun when I could afford to put meat on my table. It's primarily used for hunting. I gave it up for many years. About two years ago, a young man was murdered two houses down from my house. A week later, I went out and bought a shotgun because I thought I needed to defend my family. And that's all irrelevant because that's not what the Constitution is there for and that's not what the Second Amendment is there for. You guys know this. The big problem I have right now is I made phone calls and sent emails to this council two weeks ago. I received one response. And in that response, the council member assured me that in the event unconstitutional laws were passed down from Richmond, that this council would direct the city's attorneys to fight those unconstitutional laws. I can, I respect that. In my opinion, that's not good enough. In my opinion, we should not be here tonight having this conversation. Another gentleman has come forward and was obviously displeased with the council's inaction on another matter. And in my position, this is another issue that there's been inaction taken. You, as members of the council, should have already drafted up a resolution and absolutely unequivocally told Richmond that we will not comply with unconstitutional laws. And Mr. Smigel, you're an attorney, correct? I'm sorry, there is an attorney here? I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas. You should know that a law that is unconstitutional, you have no moral or legal responsibility to follow those laws.
Thank you so.
And you have every responsibility to resist those.
Thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you for.
Ben Loyola? Followed by James Quell.
Mayor, good evening, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Ben Loyola, 3261 Wilderness Lane, Virginia Beach, Virginia. God bless the ability to be able to assemble here and speak and share our concerns. I ask you to support a Second Amendment Constitution to support our ability to write to self-defense. I want to share my humble beginnings because it's first-person experience of what happens when a country can be taken over by the disarming its people. I was born in Havana, Cuba, and Fidel Castro promised the masses prosperity and opportunity. And how he took over a country was first to disarm the people. And after he disarmed those people, he summarily arrested many of them and killed tens of thousands of them. And that has been repeated throughout history too many times. And that's my history. I lived that. The Second Amendment is there for a reason. It's a reason that God-given inalienable rights to defend ourselves from tyranny. Individual tyranny, yes, from an individual that might want to hurt us, but also government tyranny. The founding fathers here in Virginia wrote it in the Constitution, a constitutional oath that I took numerous times, and that same author has brought it into the American Constitution. We've taken the oath. You've taken the oath. I served in the military. I went to Naval Academy. I served 30 years as a combat naval aviator. I retired as naval captain. Throughout my career, I took that oath to defend the Constitution against all enemies foreign and domestic. The same Constitution that you took oath to follow as well. It's unbelievable that we're here even questioning that fundamental God-given right, that inalienable right. So I ask you to support the support of the Second Amendment. It's God-given. It's a human right. It's embodied in our Constitution and we are here today because of that ability. I mean, King George III sent his redcoats to adhere in Virginia to disarm the colonists because they didn't like what they were doing and he took their guns away. And that is in American history. It's in my history that I was born because of we fled communist Cuba. So I can't say enough of the importance of that. It's sad that it's not supported here in Norfolk like all the other municipalities across Virginia where tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of people have supported that. It's a clear message to what's going on where a governor wants to take our rights away and basically make felons of individuals that want to defend themselves. We want to run our lands, run our businesses, take care of our family, just live the American dream like I am. And we have to have the ability to defend ourselves and defend ourselves against tyranny like the founding fathers, like our constitutional rights gives us that. God bless you. God bless America and God bless the Commonwealth of Virginia. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
James, James Quell, followed by Cameron Carson.
Hello. My name's James Quell. I live in, on 9329 Mason Creek Road. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I've never been accused of a crime or ever convicted of a crime. I've been a service member in the Army since 2014. I've been overseas multiple times and with the laws that are being proposed by Richmond, I would be instantly made a felon, not only by the firearms I own, but by holding, maintaining, possession of the weapon magazines that the government's issued me. I'm concerned for myself because if I'm pulled over for whatever reason and a police officer under the new laws that are being proposed sees the stuff the government's issued me, I could be arrested until I get someone from my unit down to validate that they were signed over to me. My unit does not get enough funding to train for firearms regularly, so I own an AR-15 so that I can maintain my own proficiency for when I go overseas on my own time, my own money. If the new laws are passed, I'll be made a felon for possessing that weapon. I do not believe that someone being afraid of a scary rifle that I may own trumps my right to have it, just as I believe that if someone does something I disagree with, they have a right to do it. I don't have a right to take that ability from, to do that away from them. I feel like that's the American way and that's the only fair way to go about this. I thank you for letting me speak and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Cameron Carson, followed by Kim Schrauts.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. Mrs. Doyle, it's good to see you again. My name is Cameron Carlson, actually, as of yesterday, Dr. Cameron Carlson.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I live at 1611 LaSalle Avenue in Norfolk, Virginia, in accordance with the rules of the decorum of the city council chambers. All members and residents in support of a two-alpha resolution, please rise. Thank you all. Please be seated. Again, my name is Dr. Cameron Carlson. I'm a proud but frustrated resident of the city of Norfolk. Honorable Mayor Alexander and council members, Virginians have a long and proud history of protecting the citizenry of this state. In the American Revolution, Virginians fought and died at Trenton, Monmouth Courthouse, Germantown, and many other battlefields whose names are inexorably linked to our country's proud heritage. At First Bull Run, General Bernard B., in an effort to rally his exhausted troops, was reported to have said, "Look, men, there stands Jackson like a stone wall. Let us be determined to die here today and we shall be victorious. Rally behind the Virginians. Thank God they are here. Virginians here tonight have that same spirit as our ancestors." We have previously asked you to support a Second Amendment constitutional city resolution. We have asked and we ask again for your help to fight the unconstitutional actions of our representatives in Richmond. Once more, we seek your help. I call on the city council to draft a revolution, resolution dedicating Norfolk as a Second Amendment constitutional city. To lose this constitutional right is to open the door to further degradation of our other rights. You and the citizens of Virginia and Norfolk have a duty to protect our rights. We beg you to do this tonight. Not everyone owns a firearm, carries a firearm, or even wants to be around a firearm, and that is their right. Others, like those before you tonight, are advocates of responsible firearm ownership and that is our right. We ask you to respect and honor everyone's right tonight. Billions of firearms already exist in our country. Individuals with evil and illegal motives will obtain firearms. We can't stop them by legislation. How do we stop them? I don't know. But the present attack on the Second Amendment rights of all citizens, honorable or otherwise, is not the answer. I remind you of one of the most recent church shootings. Had it not been for an armed parishioner, many people could have died. To paraphrase William Douglas, "The amendments to our Constitution, all of them, including the Second Amendment, makes confidence in the common sense of our people and in the maturity of their judgment, the great postulate of our democracy." In closing, if you feel how we feel, if you see the injustice being perpetrated all around us, I ask you to become champions for our city and fight for the people in this room downstairs and around the country because these people will do the same for you. We ask the city council, beg the city council, to please draft and pass a resolution to declare Norfolk a Second Amendment sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Schrauts, followed by Eric Hovik.
Hi, I'm Kim Shores.
Shores, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Alexander and the city council members. I'm very nervous. I'm Kim Shores. I reside at 227 Sir Oliver Road, Norfolk, in the Cromwell Farms area. I'm third generation owner of my home. My father was raised there. Through the years, I've seen many accomplishments in this city and I come to you out of concern this evening for my rights as a Virginian. You may recall the horrible rain event that took place in 2009, I'm sure. My husband was working to help those trapped in the rising water in the Tidewater Drive underpass. While he was there, he was beaten and left for dead on the street to die. It chokes me up to talk about it. The result of this attack left him with PTSD, as you can imagine, and as a result, my husband never leaves our home without his firearm. He's an avid hunter. He's taught my three children how to respect, the respect of a firearm as well as handling firearms, and he takes him hunting as well. My concern over the proposed legislation is it doesn't seem to have been thoroughly thought out. The fact is, our governor has proven to be less than honest and will do and say anything to make amends to those he has harmed. Those amends and his restitution should not come at my expense or these people's expense. He is removing the citizens' rights to protect us from the very people such as unvetted refugees coming into our communities as well as unleashing criminals back out onto the streets. Our legislature continues to talk out of both sides of their mouth. They tell me my children aren't allowed to vape or smoke or drink until they're 21, yet they're able to go and get birth control or an abortion at the age of 15. My son can go to war at the age of 18 and he can die for his country, but when he comes back to Virginia, he's not going to be allowed to handle a gun until he's 21. My, I'm sorry. The truth is, I just feel like the truth is nobody wants to address the real mental health issues going on in this country. They want to take care of the low-hanging fruit, which is the gun. It's easy to go in and take a gun from somebody. Even though we are rightful, law-abiding citizens every day, my gun does not jump out of a closet and assault anyone. I'm sorry. And I urge the council to please protect my rights, protect my husband's right to defend himself and my children. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, followed by Robert Allen.
Before my three minutes start, I got a question. This is my third time here. I came November, I came December. November, I asked the same thing and then when I came back in December, I was told, hey, here's the process. So I followed the process. I crafted an email. I sent it to you, Mr. Smigel, you, Mrs. McClellan, you, Mayor Alexander, and you, Mr. Bull. So this is really inefficient.
Give us your address and.
My name's Eric Hovik. H-O-V as in Victor, I-K. My address is 169 West Ocean Avenue. So if I correspond with you again in the future, I expect to be acknowledged. I don't work for you. All right, so this is my third time here. The last time I was here, I spoke with you, and I wrote a written resolution requesting that you make Norfolk a sanctuary city, so it's already, the work's been done for you. I'm just asking that you vote on it. The legislation being proposed by the governor and the Assembly is unconstitutional, so there's no obligation to follow those laws. The government's conduct, the governor's conduct and the Assembly's conduct in, in this legislation basically violates my First Amendment rights, my Second Amendment rights, and my Fourth Amendment rights. By doing that, their conduct is criminal. I urge you to read Section 242 of U.S. Code Title 18. It states, "Section 242 of Title 18 makes it a crime for any person acting under color of any law to willfully deprive a person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution or laws of the United States. For the purpose of Section 242, acts under color of law include acts only done, not only done by federal, state, or local officials within their lawful authority, but also acts done beyond the bounds of that official's lawful authority. If the acts are done while the official is purporting to or pretending to act in the performance of his or her official duties, persons acting under color of law within the meaning of this statute include police officers, prisons, guards, and other law enforcement officials, as well as judges, care providers in public health facilities, and any others who are acting as public officials. It is not necessary that the crime be motivated by animus toward the race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin of the victim. The offense is punishable by a range of imprisonment up to a life term or the death penalty, depending upon the circumstances of the crime and the resulting injury, if any. If gun confiscations are to take place in this city, the city where you come to an otherwise law-abiding person's home and attempt to disarm them, people are going to get hurt, and it is going to be on this council and on the governor and on the Virginia Assembly."
Thank you so much. All right, Robert?
What do I have to do? What have I not done? I understand.
Your time has expired, sir.
I get that, but I've been ignored. I want to know what I have to do to get you to vote on this, Mr. Mayor. What email do I have to send? What memo do I have to write? What do I have to do for you to take action, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for coming, sir. Robert, Robert Allen followed by Rich Williams. Robert Allen?
He can't get up. They won't let him up. They closed off. Anybody coming up here, say in the word capacity.
All right, so, Williams, Rich Williams?
Rich Williams.
Come on here, come on here, Rich. Followed by Terry Santur.
Santur.
Santur, you followed, Rich.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for being here tonight and for having this, this meeting. It's an exercise in democracy, and people do it better in the interest of their government. My name is Rick Williams. I live at 1612 Skyline Drive. I want to urge City Council to adopt the resolution that would make Norfolk a sanctuary city in defense of our constitutional and Second Amendment rights. It is my thought that standing in such a manner with other localities that have taken a similar stand is the best way to defend our rights and to make clear to legislators that it is not worth the time and effort to preserve those legislations that in fact are unconstitutional and will not work. By, by defending the Second Amendment, we do in fact enhance public safety. We, when we defend the rights of one, we defend the rights of all, and we put the onus where it needs to be, which is crafting laws that absolutely honestly enhance public safety by keeping criminals off the street and addressing problems without threatening and undermining the rights of law-abiding citizens. One example of what I consider to be a threat to our Second Constitutional Amendment is the so-called red flag laws, which would presumably address the issue of people who have mental issues having their firearms taken away until those issues are adjudicated. Well, the fact of the matter is, the way those modern legislation is written, what would happen is, they, those complaints can be filed against an individual without any corroborating evidence. The individual making the complaint doesn't have to be unrecorded as to their name. That, that flies in the face of being able to confront your accuser. It fly, it, it puts the onus on somebody who is accused, who had their firearm confiscated, as it were. It puts the onus on them to prove they're not a problem. It says, "You're guilty until you prove you're innocent." That stands our basic premise of American due dependence on its head. We say, "You're innocent until proven guilty."
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Terry? Terry's followed by John Abernathy.
Hello, my name's Terry Allen Santur. I live at 6389 Partridge Street, Novel. And I, as this man behind me spoke of deprivation of rights under color of law, that was what I wanted to talk about. Hey, the governor is saying this stuff is all constitutional, what he's proposing, and that's not true. It hasn't been to the Supreme Court yet. And if someone is, God forbid, killed in a red flag incident, the law you enforce today is maybe the law that is overturned later on, and I don't think that, I think that's a shit sandwich, I don't think we want to take a bite of. And it could get you prosecuted later. I don't think anybody's good, would get locked up over it or put to death about it, but I could see somebody losing everything they got and everything they're ever going to get. And I don't think we want to go there, so I recommend you adopt a resolution to not use any city resources to enforce this kind of stuff. And as far as the universal background checks go, hey, one time I was in favor of them, you know, but the Lois Lerner and the IRS scandal showed me that the governor, government has a tendency to collect information for one reason and abuse it for another one. That's why I don't believe in the UBCs or the registration of rifles or anything like that, because I don't want it to be an electronic Star of David that's going to use to stigmatize people, keep them off juries, target them for audits, use it to deny, delay services and benefits. People don't need that. As far as the safety issues go, I'll tell you what, if, if the revolution, if Nazi Germany, Mao's China, that's too long ago, we got Venezuela today. Chavez took over, the most prosperous country in the hemisphere. One of the first things he did was registration, and one of the second things he did was confiscation of privately-owned arms, and then he's proceeded to run that country into the dirt. And I don't think we want to go there either. And as far as safety goes, prison isn't safe, and they don't have guns there. And to quote Thomas Jefferson, "I prefer dangerous freedom rather than safe slavery." Thank you very much.
John's followed by Diane Sexton.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is John Abernathy. I live at 448 Cummings Road, Virginia Beach. I've been to nine of these meetings. This is some serious stuff, and everything everybody has said here is so factually true. But all you need to be worried about is two things, or be concerned about is two things. What are you going to do come August 1st if all these laws pass as written? Are you concealed carry? Your family's going to be in danger because the criminals are still going to have guns, and you're not. All this is doing, and the lawyer can tell us, it's not law-abiding, it's common sense. No such thing as common sense safety gun laws, that's a load. It's the people right here that want you to stand up with them and tell that tyrannical, black-faced liar in Richmond that you stand for us, that you are here to back the people here. And I see a couple of smug faces up there on the tax dollar. You work for us, and we just ask you to stand with us. We just ask you to not agree that these laws are good, bad, or whatever. I don't care if you're a Democrat, independent, Democrat, independent, Republican, whatever. All we're asking to do, all we're asking for you to do is stand with us. Put it on the agenda, let it get voted on. And you put it on the agenda, and I'll bet a paycheck, you have three times as many people at the next meeting to make sure that you vote on it. And if you don't vote on it, there's a little check marked by your name. Sharpen your pencils, clear out your desk, write your resume, because you will be voted out of office. The people want to hear that you are with them and for them. That's all. Thank you.
Diane, Miss Sexton followed by Robert Allen.
Yes, sir. Hi, my name is Diane Sexton. I live at 7020 Gale Drive in Norfolk. I'd like to thank you guys for doing the job that you do for us. First, I am from a long line of a military family. My father was a World War II veteran. He was a mighty man of God and served the United States of America in the military for 40 years. His brother also was a World War II veteran. I'm a Marine Corps widow. I have two children, Timmy and Cory, that I have raised since my husband was killed 21 years ago. Two out of the three military members in my family and household died serving this country because they believed in the God whose government has the shoulders of this whole, the whole government is upon his shoulders. They believed it. They, they believed it so much that they died for it. They died for it. I'm without an uncle, I'm without a husband. And for the city of Norfolk and each one of you not to consider to uphold and make Norfolk a sanctuary city is a slap in my face because I have family members that died defending this constitution. You sit where you sit because of my father, because of my uncle, and because of my husband. Please honor their memory and thank you for the job you do for the city of Norfolk. You have a tough job, I wouldn't want it, but thank you so much, and we will pray for you. God bless you guys.
Thank you. Robert, Robert Allen followed by Matthew Adams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Born in Norfolk, raised in Hatton Roads, 48 years. U.S. Army veteran, son, nephew, uncle, brother of Virginia Beach police officers. We are lawful gun owners, are force multipliers of the police department. They need us. The burden should not be on them to, to protect our citizens. We can protect ourselves, but we can't have our hands tied. We need each other. I, my, my mother said, if you haven't heard it tonight, my mother says it all the time, I carry a gun because I cannot carry a police officer. All right, my wife and my little girl have been involved twice in situations where they were outnumbered at a stoplight, their car was surrounded just because they tapped their horn to let them know they were at a green light. And if my wife were not armed, who knows what would have happened? They literally drove over the hood of my wife's car to stop her from leaving. I'm very shaken because I, my brother was murdered in Norfolk because he didn't have the ability to arm himself because of where he was. It's, we, you know the right thing. Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, right, tonight Portsmouth is considering the same thing. We got this. We're all neighbors. We're right down the street from you in Virginia Beach. They did the right thing. You guys, please stand, stand with us, stand with the people.
Stand with us. What is your, what is your address?
5576 Glenvee Drive.
What city?
Virginia Beach.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Matthew, Matthew Adams followed by Josiah Hunter.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Matthew Adams. I live at 7073 Kirby Crescent, Norfolk, Virginia. And I represent the average guy, okay? When I say the average guy, I'm talking about 20 years in the service. I was law enforcement in the Navy. I served on five different continents, supporting five different countries, defending five different peoples. I fought pirates, I fought terrorists, and I fought sailors and Marines. So as an average guy, let me tell you a little bit about my family. My wife's Hispanic. My daughter lives in California. I have seven grandkids. Her husband is a strong black man. Color means nothing to me. I've heard this argument is about race. I've heard we're all racist. I've heard we've all got prejudices. I bleed blue, I bleed red. We all do. This right is not granted by the Constitution. This right is an inalienable human right, just like our right to worship and our right to speak. Somebody's feelings don't matter. I don't know why it is that somewhere in between the 1950s and the 1960s, we decided that we should make our decisions based on feelings rather than facts. And the facts say that an armed citizenry is a safer citizenry. Look at Chicago, look at most of our major cities. This is a fact that is undeniable. Okay? We all want our kids to be safe, we all want our loved ones to be safe. Taking law-abiding citizens' guns away does not make them safe. In fact, it probably puts them in danger. And that is an indisputable fact. So Richmond says that it's okay to abort, abort a baby after he's born, but we want to take away your guns to protect our children. So which is it? At what point is my child's life valuable? Does anybody have an answer for me? Because I say conception in the womb until God takes him home.
Thank you so much.
One more thing. When the Romans came to take...
Sir?
Jesus...
Sir, your time has expired.
After 20 minutes talking to Lieutenant Governor yesterday, and he did interrupt me once, I don't expect to be interrupted here.
Sir, your time has expired. You have other people who want to speak.
When the Roman soldiers came to take Jesus away...
So what's going to happen, sir? If we keep talking, the rest won't, because I will adjourn the meeting, and all the people who signed up, sir, will be disrespected because of you.
Tyrannical?
Josiah Hunter.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having us. My name is Josiah Hunter. I live at 301 East Randall Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia. I'm representing Mr. Smigel, Mrs. McClellan, and of course, yourself, Mayor. Thank you. I came to Norfolk from the Navy. I've been a proud Norfolk resident for 27 years. I love Norfolk. Could have moved somewhere else, stayed here because I like it. I'm here also to ask you to represent me and my fellow citizens to stand up and stand up for the civil liberties of all Norfolk residents and join our neighbor cities of Virginia Beach and Chesapeake in declaring Norfolk a Second Amendment constitutional city. I'm passionate about the Second Amendment for a lot of reasons, one of which is I'm only here speaking to you tonight because I carry a gun. In the summer 2003, I was violently attacked in the Oakdale Farm section of town in front of my house by a stranger I'd never seen. It was a four-minute response before the Norfolk police showed up. I'm happy they showed up. They were outstanding once on scene, but in those four minutes, if I hadn't had a They were outstanding once on scene, but in those four minutes, if I hadn't had a gun, I was going to die. Gonna jump ahead, just a few months ago, I had a friend who was killed, Christopher Rapp, on May 31st, 2019, at Virginia Beach City, Virginia Beach City Complex. I like to think he might have been alive had Mrs. Nixon had her gun on her that day. Gun-free zones do not make us safer. The governor and a lot of the General Assembly is putting forth a lot of legislation that even by their own admittance wouldn't have stopped that, wouldn't have done anything, and quite frankly, it's not gonna make anyone any safer. Segment rights, as stated before, they're not my rights, they're our rights, they're women's rights, they're minority rights, they're gay rights, they're straight rights, they're everybody's rights. They're human rights. I'm asking for you, my elected representatives, to stand with us in telling Richmond that the rights of the citizens of Norfolk shall not be infringed. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Richard Baldwin followed by Bruce Sherman.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen, President, my name is Richard Baldwin. I reside at 339 East Lester Avenue in Oceanview. I'm a retired Navy Mustang. I am a retired Norfolk Sheriff's Deputy. As of tonight, 125 out of 133 jurisdictions in the state of Virginia have declared themselves for the Second Amendment, for the rights of its citizens. I'm here to urge you in the strongest possible terms to adopt a resolution to that effect, that you stand for the rights of the citizens of Norfolk. I know resolutions don't carry the power of law. They speak very loudly. 125 out of 133 jurisdictions in the state. There aren't very many people here tonight. Come with me Monday, come with me to Richmond and look at the people that are gonna be there for this very same purpose. The General Assembly is supposed to represent me and my rights. Not just me, but my rights also. City Council represents me and is supposed to represent my rights. Please do it. I shouldn't have come here and beg for something as simple as that. Stand up and state your stand for freedom. It's not about gun control as much as it's about control, as much as it's about freedom. When the Constitution of the country and the state both say the right to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed and shall be protected, I don't know what else to say to you. I don't want you dragging your feet on this. Stand up and do the right thing for us, for all of us, us and us. It's about your freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce followed by Ken Reed.
Mr. Mayor, Councilpeople, thank you for having this session. If the Commonwealth of Virginia were considering a law where a person can only post ten times a month to social media or needs a permit to open a Facebook account-
Sir, can you give us your name and your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Bruce Sherman, 1127 Llewellyn, Norfolk. Where was I? Or if you need a permit to open up a Facebook account, you would stand with the people and make your voice known. I urge you to join the ninety-one of ninety-five counties, thirteen of thirty-eight independent cities, and twenty-four towns who have declared themselves Second Amendment sanctuaries. This symbolic action will show that Norfolk stands with decent, law-abiding Virginia citizens and not with outside state big-money interests. As part of a targeted community, any restriction on our rights will negatively impact us, my community, and Norfolk directly. A few months ago, on my way to go worship, I heard a commotion coming from a nightclub next to where I worship. I personally stopped a woman from being beaten by her partner that night. When his anger turned towards me, I showed that I was able to defend myself with lethal force. He second-guessed his actions and left. Police on the scene told me that I was justified and legal in my actions. At the court case, the person received two years probation along with a no-contact order with the victim. And I'm not a police officer, I'm not a veteran, I'm a regular citizen who prevented something that could have been very horrible because I was armed that night. I urge you to join ninety-five-plus percent of the landmass of the state of Virginia in declaring us a Second Amendment sanctuary location. I know that it's symbolic. I know it does not carry the weight of law, but it carries the will of the people, and that's what you're elected to do. Thank you.
Ken Reed followed by Carolyn Feit.
Thank you for the time, Dr. Mayor. I guess it's Dr. Mayor and Members of the Council. My name is Ken Reed, 506 Spotswood Avenue. I'm a new resident relatively, and I love the city a lot. It's got a lot of potential, it really does. I moved here from Northern Virginia and I'm a proud member of this great Orthodox Jewish community. See a lot of our, our members here in the audience tonight in support of the Second Amendment, and here's why. I think we all know there's been a surge of anti-Semitism in this country, and it's been horrible, and it's been one of the, it's been the worst anti-Semitism probably since the 30s. And even in the 30s, I'm not aware of people being shot and killed in synagogues as they have been in New York, I mean, in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and in California, all of which have very restrictive gun laws. Recently, a member of our community mentioned that he was riding, walking along, and as you know, we all walk, yes, we walk on Shabbos, we don't use our cars, we don't walk, we don't use our cars on holidays, Jewish holidays. And someone said to him on a bike, "Get out of my way, you effin' Jew." And I couldn't believe this, and neither could he. And so we spoke to a member of our community, said, "I wanna get a gun. What do I have to do to get it?" And he says, "Well, there is no requirements rule. You just go down and you get it. You should take training, whatever, you should do this, get a concealed permit is something else." So a lot of our members have that ability, and I think that's probably one of the reasons why you don't see people preying upon the Orthodox Jewish community in Norfolk. It's because probably a lot of criminals know that people are armed. However, Virginia's General Assembly and the governor are now poised to do the same mistake that New York and New Jersey are doing. And what they're doing up there in New York and New Jersey is not just making it more difficult to own a firearm, but they're also relaxing criminal enforcement. And that's why I'm coming to you tonight, is because in your legislative agenda, you support "safe neighborhoods." That's a quote. And what they're talking about by eliminating certain cash bail requirements and by making it a felony only if you steal over $900 and going back to parole is going to create more of a problem, coupled with the restrictions on firearms ownership. That's what concerns me. And it concerns me that there might be an attitude that it may not happen here. That's always what people say. And it seems to me, just from listening to the people tonight, that you have been kicking the can down the road and you have refused to even offer debate on a Second Amendment sanctuary or constitutional city. Why don't you amend your legislative agenda, bring your sheriff, your police chief, and your legislators in and ask them, "Do you really want to relax criminal enforcement in this state? Do you really want to expose my community, Muslims, Sikhs, or anybody who looks different to criminals? That's the problem, and can you live with that if something like that were to happen in this great city? Thank you very much, Your Honor."
Thank you so much. Carolyn is followed by William Jackson, Sr.
Mr. Reddick, do you need a cup of coffee, sir?
Sir?
Hi, my name's Carolyn Feit. My address is 9430 Atlants in Oceanview, Norfolk. I was, for a living, I help handicap people be mobile. One of my clients came in today and made me aware of this meeting tonight, and I had to be here. Been in Norfolk for about a year, wasn't in my house for about four months, and I had a bullet go through my window. I'm just happy I have a gun. I'm happy I'm able to defend myself if somebody comes in my house. Single parent, you know, I just wanna be able to defend myself, and I hope you guys don't let that go away. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. William Jackson followed by Dustin Edwards.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, particularly Angela and Mamie, I know them both well and they're great people. I'm seventy-eight years old, and I've been in Norfolk, Virginia since 1971. I spent four years in the U.S. Air Force and Military Police. I worked at Norfolk Naval Shipyard for thirty-one and a half years, and I crawled in some holes that you wouldn't wanna go in. I spent all day yesterday in the Pocahontas Building in Richmond, Virginia. Wavy TV last night said that there was approximately 200 people in favor of the guns. That's a lie, because I was in that building and there had to be well over 2,000 people. I went from floor one to the fifth floor, and you couldn't move around in the place. I didn't prepare a text tonight because I really didn't plan to come here, but I want to ask all of you to contact your representative and tell them, "Vote no" on all this garbage that they're trying to push through. Even the three that they want to pass through to give you the authority to ban guns at a parade or any city function, okay? You can ban guns, they wanna let you ban guns in all of your city buildings, city parks. City parks are safe places, aren't they? Okay? At night in particular. I'm gonna tell you what those bills are if you wanna write them down. SB 35, parades and marches. SB 615, buildings and parks. SB 450, chambers of local governing bodies. Guess where that is? If they pass that, I've seen a number of these great people here are carrying. I don't carry yet, but I'm about to start, I think. Please give very serious consideration to this sanctuary city constitutional amendment, whichever they wanna call it. Sanctuary cities is great with me. If you wanna add constitutional, it's okay. But give it serious consideration and give us a chance to vote on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dustin followed by Adam Nussbaum.
My name is Dustin Edwards. I live at 6127 Edwards Street. I had a whole list of stuff here to say, but everyone's already said it. There's only one question, there's only one thing that hasn't been addressed. I hear all these plans about how you're gonna get the guns from us law-abiding citizens. Not one time have I heard how you're gonna get it from the criminals, the ones that are actually doing the crimes, the ones that are killing people, the ones that are robbing. That's more on the question. You have all these laws, how are you gonna get it from me, which you're not gonna get it from me, I can tell you that right now, and most of them too, you ain't getting it from them either. How are you gonna get it from bad guys? The Second Amendment isn't a guarantee of safety, it's a guarantee of a fighting chance against tyranny, even if it comes from our own government, which it is.
Adam is followed by Robert Duncan.
Good evening. My name's Adam Nussbaum, and I live at 201 Westover Avenue. I hope everyone here had a good holiday season. Just to be clear, any of my viewpoints shared here tonight do not reflect any of my places of work. Throughout my time serving in the U.S. Navy, as a current graduate student at American University, as a current employee of NATO, I've given my all to uphold American values and defend this country from foreign threats. Even though I took that oath the day I enlisted, I never actually thought I would have to defend this great nation from domestic threats. However these are trying times and defend these threats, I will. The Bill of Rights was not written as a suggestion or even as rights bestowed upon us by the government. These rights are simply recognized as fundamental, inalienable rights, and as such are protected by both the U.S. and Virginia constitutions. Even the current U.N. Secretary-General Antonio Guterres states, "Peace, security, and human rights are mutually reinforcing, and rights violations signal threats to security, but rights upheld contribute to peace." A fellow Virginian, Thomas Jefferson, and other founding fathers shared this beliefs and even wrote down their thoughts regarding this in the Federalist Papers. Throughout my studies and my work in international affairs, I've seen firsthand what happens to countries whose leaders forcibly take guns away from law-abiding citizens. These leaders were above the law. By not becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary city, you are in effect telling all of us and your constituents that you agree with the unconstitutional laws come down from Richmond. The latest one, HB 961, is even more restrictive than the previous SB 16. However, these laws exclude those in the legislature, police officers, and military veterans. This truly means that this assumed higher class of people is above the law. These laws discriminate against anyone who hasn't worked for the government, even some that have. With the grandfather clauses, they also discriminate against those who do not yet own a firearm, children, and our future generations. The 1% can still afford armed security for self-defense, also granting them the status that they are better than the rest of us. This notion of having an upper class above the rest of us has already plagued America's past for hundreds of years. Frankly, I am astonished that you are willing to reenact and support such laws, as this idea should be anathema to each and every one of you. Personally, I side with the Declaration of Independence and Jefferson's words, that all men are created equal, they are endowed by the Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, driving their powers from the consent of the governed. In the Virginia Declaration of Rights, George Mason also says, "Certain inherent rights of which they cannot be deprived." I, for one, do not consent. I implore you to take these words to heart, be guided by real common sense, not emotions. Make Norfolk a Second Amendment sanctuary city and join the ninety-plus percent of Virginia localities. Otherwise, you are unequivocally telling us, your constituents, that you and your counterparts in Richmond are above the law. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Robert Duncan followed by Julie Vasco.
Good evening. My name is Robert Duncan. I reside at 1104 Toller Place, Norfolk, Virginia. I'm really shocked that we're here today to even talk about something that when I was growing up was, it's a constitutional right, but here we are. A lot of this ground's already been covered, so I don't wanna go over the history lesson, of course. Just Saturday, we had a dispute in the house right behind mine. I had to call the police. Took seventeen, seventeen minutes or longer for the police to get there. There were three phone calls put in, and I don't blame the police. They're spread thin, they can't be everywhere at once. But luckily, I knew in the back of my head that I had the power to take care of myself if need be, and luckily, that didn't arise. I've had a gun since I was probably about ten years old. I started carrying since I was about twenty-one in bartending, and I've luckily never had to pull my gun to use it, and I pray to God I never have to. But to know that I can defend myself, my family, my little three-year-old and my seven-year-old, and keep that right, I urge you guys to let us keep that right. I think what it comes down to is basically it's a tool, and it's like a plunger. If you ever need one of those, whether it's a plunger or a gun, you better have one or else you're gonna be in a really bad position.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Julie Vasco. I live at 1214 East Oceanview Avenue, and I thank you for your polite attention. We are a port city. Norfolk's history shows that enemies have arrived here from over the sea and from all directions, on the land side as well. I'm sure- I'm sure people know, just right out here on the street, there's a cannonball that was fired by the British in the church wall. Many years have passed during which our forefathers and our foremothers have lived through differing scenarios in the interplay between weapons and government and war. Thousands of those years, as Europeans have experienced them, are the ones I know most about, as my forbearers are Europeans. After thousands of years trying different political systems in these many countries of Europe, early Americans came here to America and wrote what they had learned through those prior centuries into a hopeful document that we still call the American Constitution. And our Constitution has served America almost 250 years, having been tweaked ever since America's founding. Well, now we're here in Virginia, and we're leading the nation again in our thinking and our debate about whether the collective wisdom on guns and government of these past 1,250 years needs alteration now in this new age. This age in which we also have to deal with the internet and the bombardments of 24-hour news and pressures from those who advocate a world government and the cries of those who believe that the end times are already upon us and advances in shooting technology. And so they cry that the Second Amendment, which simply put says that the average citizen shall have the right to keep and bear arms, needs to be altered. Or they do so in a sneakier way, wishing to adopt new laws that would undercut this right. I think not. What's really changed in the 250 years since we had the Second Amendment? Well, the buzzing of the internet does not alter the need to defend our bodies and our homes against invasion. Of the bombardments of 24-hour news, we are wisest to limit our daily intake, but they do not remove our need to be ready to defend ourselves. Of the pressures of those who advocate world government, to them I ask, "Do you really want to hand America over without a fight?" The history of Europe shows that such a thing could happen any minute and does happen all the faster when the citizens are denied arms. For the cries of those who believe that the end times are upon us, why does this make it necessary to alter our Second Amendment rights? On the contrary, I would say that our forbearers suffered thousands of years of abuse at the hands of various governments and that our sacred U.S. Constitution has put the situation right via the Second Amendment. And so, just to quickly finish, although the technology, although the bullets fly faster now, as a freedom-loving American wanting to protect my little home in Ocean View, I just know if someone comes at me with a fast gun, I want to have a gun that's faster. Thank you.
Is that the last speaker, okay? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, concerning the Second Amendment Sanctuary City, I'm prepared as the clerk to send this letter to Governor Northam, Lieutenant Governor Fairfax, Attorney General Herring, and members of the General Assembly and members of the Norfolk City Council. We have been presented with a petition requesting the city of Norfolk adopt a resolution declaring Norfolk a Second Amendment sanctuary city, is enclosed along with the correspondence and formal remarks provided by citizens regarding this matter, which will include emails and comments this evening. Upon taking office, in accordance with Section 49.1 of the Code of Virginia, members of the City Council swear an oath to support the Constitution of the United States. This includes the Second Amendment. Support the Virginia Constitution of 1971 and faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon them. Neither the U.S. Constitution or Virginia's Constitution provides municipalities with a legal means to choose not to uphold the laws of the United States in the Commonwealth of Virginia. The Norfolk City Council members, respect and hopefully will deliberate, hope that you will deliberate this issue during the 2020 session of the General Assembly. Respectfully submitted, Richard Abel.